All right. Meetings and notes and agenda, Prior Creek Rec Center Board Meeting, Special Meeting, Sunday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty P. M. The line, sorry, we are late. We'll get started now. Item number one, call meeting order. Item number two, possible approved the minutes of October ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Those have been provided for you. Motion made by Mr. David.
I'll second it.
Second in five, Ms. Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, discuss possible recommended council action regarding the twenty twenty-six Rec Center Board Meeting Schedule.
So it's just the same day of the week, same week of the month, except one. And I just don't, I can't remember, there's one adjustment in here, and I can't remember which month it is, but that had to do, or maybe it's January's. She's got it in Ascaris by there. Jay's one, yeah, except otherwise. Okay, so that must be the, be the one. January fifteenth is what day? Let's see here. I didn't bother to look. That's gonna be, that's the third Thursday, because, yeah.
The January one is?
Yeah. The January fifteenth is the third Thursday, so that'd be the one, other than that, through the second Thursday.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Entertaining a motion?
I will make that motion approve the meeting schedule.
Motion made by Mr. Ben.
I'll second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, discussion regarding a petition from the audience presented at November fourth, twenty twenty-five City Council meeting.
So, a member of the citizen had brought some concerns forward to the council. And in short, it had to do with scheduling, particularly with the basketball gym. And so he and I had a conversation, and then subsequently, there was some email exchange. Chase McBride weighed in as well and all. And so, you know, it did cause our staff to take, take some time and kind of evaluate what's going on, but you should have a document that shows the gym schedule. And just so, and as I told the gentleman, you know, we have eighty-eight, we're open a hundred and three hours a week, eighty-eight of those hours are available to, to play basketball. There was an exception where we closed the gym on the twenty-eighth of October to get ready for the Halloween party for the kids, of which we had a record four hundred and eight, so we had a good turnout. But that was kind of the, kind of the crux of it. And then the fact that, you know, we do quite a bit of rental, rental business, and that that sometimes does cut into whatever's going on in the gym, or what people want to do in there, same in the pool. But as, as you all know, it's good revenue for us. And last year, for instance, the pool rental for pools and a couple of other things was twenty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. Just overall general rentals, as you know, we host the high school, a P. E. class, we rent, we have Palm, we have a competitive cheer team. Anyway, last year on just general rental was eighteen thousand five hundred and sixty-nine. So, you know, forty-six thousand five hundred dollars worth of, worth of rental revenue. So that's pretty significant for us. So, the reason I brought it up is to get some feedback from you all, is the board, is the advisory board, to find out if you're comfortable with what we're doing, or do we need to make adjustments? That's, that's one of the, one of the reasons. And then I think Houston has some comments he wants to make.
Yeah, actually, I did copy off the copy of the email for each one of you. The very first page is Mike's response back to the individual that had made his comments or, or concerns. The one thing that I would like to say to the audience who's been live is, I've been on this board for over nine years now, I've never had requests like this before. And what I would say to the public is, is this is an enterprise, and we are bound to generate revenue, because the tax that we receive on a monthly basis is not enough to even control our fixed costs. So therefore, there is a need for us to generate revenue. And all fairness to our director, Mike, he does a very good job, and his team, making sure that we plan this out accordingly, so that benefits all of our patrons to be able to have the ability to play basketball and all those activities that are offered. However, it is needed, that it is absolutely through MOUs and contracts, that we do rent this out to organizations, for them to be able to use it, much like, or such as schools and things like that. And so, and as my comment tonight is, is that I think you're doing a great job, you should continue down that path, because at the end of the day, we have a K and L that we're responsible for, and we need to make sure that we're generating revenue appropriately.
I think one thing that sometimes is a little bit of a misnomer, and you all might know, because you, you know, circulate the communities, you know, as you know, part of our revenue is sales tax, but it's only about half. And it fluctuates from about fifty-four thousand to sixty-five thousand, you know, depending on the time of year. So we generate the other part, you know, and for instance, you know, in our financials this month, you know, our, our expenses were a hundred thousand dollars. And that's, and that's about what it is every month, give or take five, you know, or eight. So there is a need for us to rent the facility out, you know, from a business perspective. And I think sometimes that gets lost. And, you know, my philosophy, I think, has followed the board historically, is that, you know, we're trying to serve the community as a whole. And, you know, like I said, when I did the math on the hours of availability, I personally feel pretty comfortable with what we're doing, you know. The one thing I would add, and I, I would add that, you know, we have to, to work hard at getting the word out when we change the schedule. And sometimes it doesn't get out as early as we would like, but it's just something that we're cognizant of, and we're, we work on, you know, and so.
Any discussion or comments for the director?
Mr. Mike, I, I second the, the notion. I think that if you don't have a formal rubric that you run things through, public service to the community and its members, I think we should probably do that. So if we ever did need to set a priority, it would have those priorities set. I, I think that's a good practice to have, where we say, look, we've ran all these activities, recreational, raising funds, providing a service to, to the, to the community as a whole, we've ran through these, and this is how we prioritize events. I think that's a, that's a very good thing that we should have, so if someone ever had a question about that, do you have what recourse? I see in the correspondence, he was talking about a partial or a full refund, and do we have some sort of policy on that, how that works?
No, no, I mean, if, if people are unhappy, if they, if, if they rent a space and something goes south, you know, we're pretty liberal on that, we're pretty lenient on that, so, but we don't have any written, just.
It's my, my understanding, you did offer him a refund, right?
You know, I told him at one point, I think that we would refund it if he wanted. I, I guess, seems like we had that conversation, but I wouldn't, you know, but, but I will say, and I don't know, Jack, I mean, we have that situation in the pool once in a while, and have had it in other situations with memberships. I mean, you know, my mindset is, we're there to make friends, you know, and, you know, to refund thirty-five bucks, not a big deal, you know, in my mind. But we don't, we don't have that, and I, I appreciate what you're saying, Ben. I think we could do something, it just, and, and it'd have to be kind of general, because, you know, there's so many, so many situations that pop up, so. But we don't, that's, and we can add that to our list, because we've got our policy manual out in the lobby, just keeps growing, and that's a, that's a good one to add.
I think it aligns with your mission and vision. I mean, I think you would pull most of those, those tenants, those numerical tenants that you run through, just off your mission and your vision, and I think it's strong, just like you said.
I think any member could have some type of an argument similar to his, you know, say, in the fitness classes, the teacher's sick, so you don't have it that day. I mean, you can't say, well, I want that day back, payback to me. So, I mean, it could happen, or, or the pool, like we have, it's like there's lightning outside, so they can't swim, so what do you do? I mean, you know, there's just.
Open a Pandora's box if you make it general, so it needs to be somewhat specific.
Right. But I, I think that, I don't, I don't think in this general scenario, I don't think there's any reason not to admit some fault and say, we apologize, we'd like to issue a partial or free refund for that money, and look forward to, you know, to showing you our rubric and how we run through things, and posting our hours as, as best that we can.
Yeah. Well, and, you know, sometimes you do those things on a case-by-case basis, you know, and that way, you don't pitch it all yourself, and you can't, you know, again, because there's so many possibilities.
And I would add that this, you're the director of the center. You were hired for a reason to manage it. I don't think there's any need to contact the board on anything like that.
Sure.
That's, that's your discretion.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm pretty liberal on that. I mean, I, and, you know, if you talk to Katie in particular, because she kind of handles the front desk and stuff, you know, so I think she would say, yeah, we, you know, we issue refunds.
And I'm not sure, I know that this gentleman went to Facebook as well. I would say that, in that instance, if they go to Facebook, certainly don't take it down, but certainly don't respond negatively, just, just a politically correct response, or even sometimes it's not even respond at all.
Well, and, yeah, and that's kind of the way our staff was, because there was conversation, but I don't.
Because your patrons are gonna respond for you.
Right, exactly. And that's exactly what happened, the gentleman you talked about, David. Yeah, and, and to that point, with Facebook, that is kind of our means of communication. And, you know, we probably could promote that more, you know? I mean, you being the newer guy, you know, could probably attest to that, but that's something. So we have taken note, you know, the city is, the city's working on a new website, and we're gonna, and they're gonna give us access to the, to the calendar and to our page, so we can, can, you know, handle it, you know, and all. So, and Jess has, has, that's kind of her deal, and I think she's interested in taking that on and all. So if we can use that calendar for the general stuff, but it's just, you know, and we are trying to put some parameters to on it, on reserving in advance, because what happens is, is reserve it one day for the next day, that's a problem.
Yeah.
We recognize, and we've done that some, you know, in the summertime, youth baseball, or not youth baseball, but football wants to practice, they've been practicing outside, but now the heat index is a hundred and five, and they can't do that, the rules won't allow them, so they gotta come inside, and they call at ten A. M., wanting to come at five P. M. And we've done that a couple of times. That's, but that's what creates, but again, you know, trying to accommodate the, the community, you know, I guess, under that guise, now that's, you know, that's where some issues come in, I understand that.
I, I again second that notion, that you're the director, you should take the lead on that, and then we should just, I, I would say as former members, just document whatever response we have, kept in our pocket.
Yeah, so.
Thank you for putting that on the agenda and bringing it to our attention. I know that this gentleman went before the city council, you've informed me that none of the city council member have reached out to have any issues with the, but to then, I think, again, goes back to this advisory board, they're probably putting it in our hands to, you know, and that's why I'm glad we're having the conversation in a public meeting, and everybody can see that we discuss.
And, and the city attorney's been in the loop, I've been in communication with him, so, no, no flags yet, so, okay.
All right, thank you for that. On, let's move to item number five, director's report.
Okay, and so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna call Jackie out. Jackie's gonna be here tonight to, you know, Kim.
I'm the director.
Kim, Kim was, Kim was here, you know, talked about her, the things that she does with the office and all, and so Jackie's gonna talk about what she does, you know, she's very good at what she does, takes a lot of pride in what she does, I'm very thankful. I'm gonna sign her to a lifetime contract, for at least as long as I'm here.
Those are expensive.
No buyout, though. That's where they get you. So anyway, no.
Before we move on to item five, do we need to vote on anything on the item board?
It was just, yeah, kind of an informational feedback for me, so.
I'll, I'll flag that in the minutes.
So, so anyway, no, Jackie does an excellent job. You know, very thorough, I just, you know, can't say enough good things about what she does, so.
Well, we'll see after she gets back.
Yeah, well, I thought, that I, that I, instead of me trying to, you know, come up with everything she does, I thought I'd let her do that, so, anyway.
So I just kind of put together a document for you guys, the Life of a Aquatic Professional P. C. R. C., that just kind of talks about the daily duties, what I kind of have to do on a weekly, monthly, or quarterly basis, just so you guys kind of, I mean, I think if you guys come to the rec, you see me teaching swim lessons, which is super fun, and don't get me wrong, I love it, but there's a lot of stuff that goes on behind the scenes, and so I just wanted to kind of like, make sure you all know some of the behind-the-scenes stuff. Obviously, we do lifeguard courses when we need them, water safety instructor courses, I instruct CPR for our staff members currently, but I have found that there is a community need for it as well, so we may, we may talk about putting out CPR classes for the community as well. Performing preventative maintenance, just to make sure that, you know, if something's starting to break down, feel bad, I go to Mike, I'm like, ah, help. But it's been really great, because I can go to him and say, hey, we're starting to see this declining, so we can put a plan in place, so that if it does decline, we have something, so we can keep the pool up and running without any hiccups within our schedules, hopefully. Some of the programs that we host with the pool is, we have the Prior High School Swim Team, we have the Wahoo Swim Team, which the Wahoo Swim Team is for ages five and up, and it doesn't matter if you are here in Prior, Claremore, Salina, wherever, it's a team for everybody. There's two sides of it, we actually have another side in Broken Arrow, so it's not like just for us. We host a splash program, which is a learn-to-swim-through-the-after-school program with the schools, we do that for the elementary and the junior high. We have Swim with Sophie, which Swim with Sophie is I. S. R. the Infant Survival Rescue, which is a huge, huge program. We do a lot of G. R. D. A.'s water training, when they have to do their swift water, or they have to do their rescues, so they like to come to our pool and do that, which is kind of awesome. We have, yes, we, we're gonna, we're gonna relook at that contract.
Yeah, and I know we're partners and all, but.
No, absolutely.
But yes. We also have aquatic classes that go on, we have morning classes and evening classes that happen during the day. We host our special Tiger Swim Team, which again is through the elementary schools here and high school, junior high. We have a fitter flaster clinic, which brings in an Olympic swimmer into our facility to teach a certain set of skills, it's a two-day program, but it's super awesome to have this Olympic swimmer in there and show off our facility. Some of the fun things that we like to do are the Easter egg hunts in the pool around Easter time, and then we also have a group of mermaids that comes in and swims with our children, and it's just a lot of fun. We like to have fun when we can, right? Some upcoming projects that are gonna be needing to be put into our budget and stuff like that is, we're gonna need to start looking at changing out our sand filter media, it's just something that needs to be done. Replastering the pool, if you look at the photos, there's a picture of a ginormous hole that I tend to patch a couple times a year, until we can get the funds and the time to shut it down and repatch it and replaster the entire pool. In our steps, one of the new guidelines is that we need a horizontal line in our steps, so when we do the replaster, we'll have them put that in there too. So, our U. V. system, we're looking at possibly getting that refurbished, that'll help us save on some chemical cost, so it'll also make the water even more safe than it is currently. And then our deck is also gonna need some attention with being resurfaced. Do you guys have questions for me?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
So of all these repairs that we just made, do we have kind of just a ballpark cost of what they, what combined what they would cost?
Yes, uh, we have, I have quotes for changing the sand meter out, I have quotes for replastering the pool, and I have quotes on the U. V. system. We did get a quote for the resurface, didn't we? Not one that we're.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we got a quote, we're not sure if we're gonna go with that company.
Could you give me to the hundred dollar amount of what they are?
No, but we can email it to you.
Okay, perfect.
I have all of them in my emails.
The ones I remember, the sand filter was net twenty-five thousand or so, and like I said, the one deck coating was forty grand. The U. V. I think was.
Eighteen?
Was it eighteen?
Eighteen, one of them was eighteen. And the repla, was the replaster maybe the eighteen then?
Yeah, replaster, yeah.
Okay, so the replaster was eighteen thousand.
Yeah. So it's a hundred thousand worth.
It's safe to say that we need to do this over.
The, probably the top one, I think, if I'm not, if I'm correct, is the filter.
Yeah, so, I believe we put in our budget for this fiscal year to go ahead and get the sand media cleaned and changed out. I don't wanna get super technical, but there's tubes at the bottom called fins, and some of those are breaking, and I'm just afraid if we wait too much longer, we're gonna end up with a mess. Yes.
Let me ask you, the, the lifespan of all these updates or repairs, are they all primarily so many years, or do they, are they pretty different?
I think everything's original model, it's twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so on the repairs, what would be the lifespan of these individual repairs?
Plaster in a pool set, shows ours, is about fifteen-year lifespan, so we've done a really good job with expanding that out, and so it'd be the same thing, we're not gonna change it, it's gonna, I want to stick with the same color scheme and all that stuff if possible. So again, that lifespan would be another fifteen to twenty years, if we can keep the chemicals well and balanced and used properly.
In that email, what I'd like to see, if you don't mind, I'd like to see each one of those costs broken down to kind of a hundred dollar ballpark, you know, just, and then I'd like to see how many years that's gonna hold up, so we can kind of look at, as we look at generating revenue and setting goals, what we would do to cover that cost over time, so it would be in that zero, because that's, I think that's good, as we look and set goals financially, how much money we wanna bring in as a center, just to say, well, when that fifteen years is up, we've covered that, and we're somewhat, you know, that costs are gonna keep going up, but we're at least very, very close to what we would need, I think that would give us a ballpark of what we would need to, to keep the pool going.
That might mean going up on the price on G. R. D. A.
We won't, we won't tell you what they've been paying, because.
And we, and, and I mean, we, we love those partnerships, like you said, but it's one of those things that I, you know, that, that kind of stuff is expensive, those things are extremely expensive, we send our Cherokee Nation Marshals for those, and some of those are very, very expensive.
It's a fiduciary responsibility that we generate revenue, so we can take care of what we have.
Well, I think this is something that we can stand on, if you get those numbers and you go, something's forty thousand dollars, and it's gonna last ten years, so we need to cover about four thousand dollars in revenue, just to cover that repair loan, so when it comes back, you know, ten years from now, we kind of have somewhere close to that. I think that's, that's, that's good business, just to be transparent with why we charge what we charge.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's a question I have, anybody else?
Good job, Jackie.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't know, bank that lifetime contract, but.
Probably oughta throw that dollar now in there too.
You still wanna see that?
Thanks, Jackie. Yeah. Okay, so, all right, we'll, we'll get going here, financials. So, go to the big sheet with all the yellow on it, right? So that's the, that's the official unofficial, so we're, we're pretty much official up until October, and we haven't gotten the, you know, it's gonna be forty-five days, so middle of this month, or well, should be any day, I guess, I'd like to think that we'll be getting October's financial.
So the rev reflects your numbers?
Yeah, yeah, this is, it's unofficial for October, but that's, that's what we did for October. Now, a couple of caveats. One is, so, we got twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand two fifty-six in, in October for the Cherokee Nation Program, that's not reflected anywhere in this financials, because that was September, or excuse me, that was in October, so they'll be reflected when we get those financials any day, right? Twenty grand. And then we're still, we're owed another ten two fifty-two for September and October. So right now, we're thirty short, we have twenty in the bank, it's just not reflecting in our financials yet, so.
So if we receive those, then we're looking at September being somewhere around ten thousand sixteen dollars to the green, to the positive.
Yeah.
And if you receive the revenue in October, we're looking at being somewhere around twelve thousand dollars to.
If you pull your Cherokee Nation sheet out, you can see the two months that are owed and, and all, so. But, you know, so our, our forty-one, you know, thirty, we're, we're about sixty thousand to the good, if that, if that were all through today, you know. So, you know, but my concern, as much as anything, is the monthly, you know, which we were eighty-three short. I've got a placeholder in there for a thousand on interest, you know, all, our CDs come due in October, so we'll get about fourteen off of them, or so, that's what we got last year at this time, when our CDs.
Fourteen hundred or fourteen?
Thousand.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, fourteen thousand.
Nice.
But I just put that thousand in there as a placeholder, so hopefully next month we'll have October's and, and, you know, away we go.
Does the clerk seem to be a little bit more on top of things, doing things in a timely manner?
Yeah, it's getting better, a lot better, and actually, I think I mentioned last time, there's a, a report that I wanted, I wanna get, you know, this one, has the revenues broken out? Well, I'm gonna get a report from Cassell that has the expenses line by line, so it's just taking some time, because she, Cassell had to help her run the report I wanted, and so, and she said she would run it, you know, as soon as the numbers are ready, she'll run the report and stuff. So we'll have a little different report, hopefully next month, but it'll be, it'll be more thorough. So we won't have, we won't have this, and we won't have that single page, this one right here, we won't have that, it'll all be one.
Okay.
So, and as far as expenses, you know, like I said, we had a hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses, well, if you look at that sheet, you know, fifty percent of that is our salary and benefits, that's, it's at the top, forty-nine thousand. We had about, just about seven thousand in H. V. A. C., or in, in our repair and maintenance, of which most was H. V. A. C., we had three motors we had to replace on one unit, and that was about thirty-one, thirty, thirty-one hundred dollars, and then we had, we buffed the floor for three, I'm just gonna hit the highlights, we buffed the floor for three fifty, we had to pay our, our security monitoring for four eighty, we finished, oh, we finished up the, the intruder system, and that was nineteen hundred, the H. V. A. C. was thirty-one fifty, our security system is starting to have glitches in it, and so I had a, had a young man out, and he went through everything and checked everything, but that cost five hundred dollars, because we had one that's been triggering, you know, an alarm or a breach, but it's not, it's just, it's because the, the sensor has gone bad, so we still have to get that replaced. Push pedal pull was four ninety-five, toss the lock and key, we had to have the, the door on the access control, and that back door, we had to have a little bit of work done on that, because that, the bar was sticking, so that's kind of the rundown on the, on the repair and maintenance. Just trying to think, we found a discrepancy, Katie did, in the pay between some of our, because we have, we have a few people that are having, that are doing two things, like child watch and front desk, or, and, or child watch and, and lifeguarding, or what have you, and I don't think we have that combination, but anyway, point, what's that? Yeah, point being, there's, there's a couple of people doing a couple of different jobs, and a couple of them have different pay, and so a few people got paid more than they should, and, and so, because it didn't get, didn't get coded right in the office, so we've caught that, and we, and it's not, it's not gonna affect the budget, it just affects where it shows up, so we're gonna get that corrected, so. Trying to think what else. Oh.
So the, like, there's a couple of things I wanna point out.
Sure.
Like groundskeeping, we're already at forty-three percent of budget, with only being only in our, in our.
But we're done now, there'll be one more bill for probably six hundred, and then we'll be done till April, so it'll catch up, you know, because we, just the nature of it, because we don't have anything now for four or five months.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's okay.
Looking at these numbers, after only three months, this budget.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that as well, yes.
Throws up a red flag?
Yeah, no kidding. Well, and there's another, there's another discrepancy that I'm checking out, I haven't heard back on. Yeah, no kidding. Um, well, and there's another, there's another discrepancy that I'm checking out. I haven't heard back on it. It's the, that sales tax thing again, because if you look at that, we're, we're at forty-eight percent. You know, I raised the budget this year, and we're still, so I don't know what's going on there, and I can't, I'm having trouble, trouble getting that and figured out, because I can't do it by myself, because I don't, I don't deal with it. So, that one's, that's a question in the hopper. So, hopefully I can get that figured out. Um, the other thing I was gonna say, utilities. And you, you have a, a September's final from the city, and, uh, you'll see in here that our utility bill is fifteen thousand, which is down just a little bit, but of course, we've had a little mild weather in September. But I did talk to Jared about possibly capping our utilities. So, he's gonna do a little number crunching and thinking, and then get back to me. So, that's, you and I talked.
How, how, yeah, how would we receptive, were they, the idea?
He was fine. He was good. He, he said, I don't know what I can do, but he, he said, I'll check into it, so.
That would be one.
That would be great.
Yeah, well, that's, that came out of a conversation with Ben, uh, so.
We're probably one of the highest.
Oh, gosh.
One every single month that they receive.
I would say.
Well, and I just, you know, and I know they had some increases, and I know we were leaking gas for a while, right? You know, uh, we had those valves replaced, but our bill's gone up three or four grand a month, you know, since I started. You know, almost three years now, but.
Wow.
You don't know, we're only at twenty-eight percent of the budget.
Yeah. So, and we, we're what, what are we, twenty, uh, twenty-five percent? Well, through September.
The other one I noticed here was the, uh, the insurance, the health, fitness health insurance is at fifty-nine point two percent of the budget.
Which one are you looking at?
Uh, line under rec center, rec fitness center.
On the report?
Yeah, so that's, um, that's, uh, eight four, eight four, eight, plus fifty twenty-three.
Fifty twenty-three, okay, yeah.
So, fitness health insurance, um, fifty-nine percent.
Oh, are you looking, are you looking at this one? Uh-huh. Where, where are you seeing?
Down that second page, page forty-nine, down to the bottom, rec fitness.
Oh, the total, okay, I see.
Line number, it's right in the center. If you look over, it's fifty-nine point two percent. Um, I'm just wondering if we.
Oh, that's, oh, fitness health insurance.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they didn't make some sort of mistake there.
Well, let's see, because that's Jess. Really, that's Jess only.
Fifty-nine percent of the budget. We're only three months into the budget.
Yeah, it should be, it should be very similar to aquatics.
Yeah, you might wanna check on that.
That's Jackie, yeah.
Because I wanna make sure, because on the health insurance, they literally allocate, you know. I wanna make sure they're not allocating somebody else's health insurance to our expenditures.
Good catch, yeah.
They need to get, make sure, and I, and I just.
Yeah, because Jackie's is nineteen hundred and twenty-five.
I think maybe you need to just visit with them and say, hey, is this employee?
Yes.
Has some really good health insurance.
There's no thinking about it. Yeah, definitely.
And my wife is, is the broker, and I know that she got you like a really good.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like seventeen percent. She got it down to three.
Yeah, right.
Which is standard.
Yeah.
If not, I'm gonna pillow talk to her. I'm gonna say, what the?
She's gonna buy you a big Christmas present, I guess.
If I come to work tomorrow with a black eye, you guys know I brought that.
Oh, shoot. Well, yeah, we'll get that checked out. Um, so, that's that. We talked about rentals. And, uh, well, the only thing left really is the membership, and our membership went up three percent.
Yes.
Overall, so, uh, and actually, the, the Cherokee Nation, it dipped, but it came back. You know, last month, September was four fifteen, uh, and October, it ended up at four eighty-one.
Right.
So, you know, things have leveled off, maybe a little bit, but, uh, you know, membership's strong. I mean, it's, you know, overall, uh, you know, sometimes I get a little gun shy when you think it's going too well, it kind of a thing, you know, but staff is doing a great job, and we're just kind of cruising, you know, just, this little deal with the scheduling, you know, will take to heart and, uh, and all, so. Um, you know, that's kind of, kind of where we're at. Just, um, a couple of quick things. Uh, maintain, don't gain starts, I think, next week, I think, before.
Maybe this, this week.
Is it this week?
Starts, I think, Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, all right. Let's start, getting ready to start.
This was said this morning when I asked her.
What's that?
I asked this morning, that's what she said, it starts Wednesday.
Okay, all right.
Starts on the nineteenth, I don't check.
Yeah, that's Wednesday, okay. So, we got that going on.
Started earlier. I just, I've lost four pounds in the last.
It's all that Halloween candy.
Exactly.
Sugar burned it off of you.
You know, we did.
Does rock count in your pocket?
You know, we did get the HVAC unit approved. Whoopie. So, we'll get, we'll get that going. I've talked to, to Jako a little bit. So, he's drawing up the new, so, because we'll have to pay about forty-five grand on that upfront to get the thing ordered. Um, other than that, nothing too crazy going on in facility repair, maintenance and all. You know, we did lose Robert Morgan.
I was gonna ask about that.
You know, our custodian maintenance, so we're kind of evaluating what we're gonna do there. We, I'm checking into maybe a cleaning service when we find one. You know, I think if they can, Matt, if they can, it'd be nice to have something overnight almost, you know. Um, that way, nobody's around, you can get her done. You know, I get, I understand there's, you know, a little risk or concern with that, but, but if they do a good job and all, we'll keep them. If they don't, if that's the route we end up going, otherwise, we'll move on. But I think we can save some money too, maybe. Now, that's about a sixty-one thousand dollar package with salary and benefits. So, you know, be nice, if we could pull it off, and have a nice, get a nice cleaning service or something.
I guess the board members could rotate.
Well, that's what I was thinking, to just, just to get to know the place better.
That's right. Have your workouts earlier.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Just open up at, at four, we can clean it real quick, and then go to work.
And go put, go work out, exactly.
Come on, Dave, you and I, that's it.
Exactly.
We live in more than a four, forty-five, they can do it.
Uh, I mentioned the Halloween party, you know, uh, Katie and, and Rachel Bluebird, they, you know, Rachel was kind of the main lead. Katie was right there with her. They got that going. Uh, Jess helped with that as well. Um, Christina Satina, that's a teacher, uh, and a fitness, and then started, had started working the front desk. She, uh, she was involved in that. And we had a multitude of volunteers, and, uh, and that was good. Had the pickleball, a couple of pickleball ladies were there, and, uh, Jess's mom and Tamara, uh, so. Um, that was good. Uh, the bleachers are at Purple Wave, so hopefully we'll get some money out of that before too long on that auction. Um, just a reminder, the Christmas party is December fifth at six thirty at the Fat Toad. Um.
Let me say it again.
December fifth at six thirty at the Fat Toad, so if you don't have that on your schedule.
December fif-. Wow.
So, those are the hot, those are the highlights, excuse me.
Better market on the town.
So. Think that's it?
It is.
Somebody's got any questions?
Well, we appreciate the report, sir.
I do have a comment. It is, it is kind of a misnomer, but, uh, you might talk to Mr. House, Kallison.
Okay.
With, you know, having the Cherokee Nation memberships there, uh, you don't have to be a Cherokee Nation property to have, uh, career services, has like work programs, where people come through and through different mechanisms of not being employed, either through, you know, uh, being laid off, or being a housewife, or taking care of a loved one or something. They have programs, work programs, that they'll come in and send you someone to, to work there, and then they'll pay their salary, so.
Okay.
It might be something you might reach out.
I will, because.
If you need my assistance on that, then I can definitely, or someone, a lot of people think, you have to be a Cherokee Nation property to do that.
Well, you know, Darian was like that. That's how he started, I think. He was in that program.
Yep.
And then I think it was two years, and typically, they move on, but he didn't right away.
He was willing to find examples of that program.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I think that would be a, be a, be a nice little point of, hey, guys, you know, we really want to.
Yeah.
You know, get this money that, that you're given for memberships, who aren't to be a part of this, and send people along. I bet you Donald would be.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Probably popular.
And the other thing that pops into my mind too, is we're going to go out, I talked to Marshall White out at the Child Development Center a while back, right, right about when they opened. And so, uh, Jackie, myself, probably Kim and Jess are gonna go out there, Katie, and just kind of walk around and see how we can collaborate, because I'm sure swimming.
Nice.
I'm sure that they would like to do, I think they'd like to maybe do some swimming and different things, so. Anyway, we're gonna par- partner with them. She was open.
I've heard it's really nice up there. I'd like to go check it out.
We took the tour today on the green ribbon cutting.
Yeah, beautiful.
I'd like to check it out.
Except two percent milk in the water fountain.
Yeah, you know, but that, you know, that facility in Salina, it was warm. I miss that ribbon cutting. I was out of town, so I'm sorry I wasn't there.
Me and Mike sat there, and we sweated butt in.
I bet.
Yeah.
They, they.
It was warm.
I probably shouldn't say. Well, they had a lot of speakers, and a lot of good stuff to say.
No, it was good. It was good, but it was hot.
It's beautiful.
Well, I'm glad I wasn't there.
The administration.
Check it out, too.
All righty, um, any other comments from the board? All right, seeing none, then we officially have to go.
Thank you all.
Do we have notes?
I have, I just saw, I went through on each item and put, you called the order.